has been awarded $300,000 through the Texas General Land Office Resilient Communities Program to update our comprehensive plan at no expense to the city. So last night, the community came together for the kickoff planning meeting to begin shaping Beaumont's 20-year vision for growth and development. Community input is key, so we invite everyone to mark your calendars to join us for the next public meeting, February 9th through the 13th, where you can share your ideas for Beaumont's future. City offices will be closed Tuesday, November 11th in recognition of Veterans Day, and we want to say a special thank you to all of our servicemen and women who have sacrificed for all of our freedoms. We also want to let everyone know about the city's newly-formed Mayor's Veterans Coalition that is working to help bring together the many service groups in our community that are available to help our local vets. And these meetings are held every third Tuesday at Central Park Community Center, that's 640 South Fourth Street at 10:00 a.m. The next meeting will be on November 18th, and all are welcome to attend. We're proud to introduce you to Beaumont Professional Firefighters' first fire buddy, Maddie May. Project Fire Buddies is a nationwide nonprofit that partners with the fire departments to provide support and create joyful experiences for children battling serious illnesses, and Beaumont is happy to join in this effort. Maddie was diagnosed with a brain tumor last year, but she's doing fantastic. And during her visit to the station, she got to meet the crew, climb inside the engine, take a ride in the ladder bucket, and even have a ball fight with the deputy chief. Our fire crews and Maddie are both looking forward to her next visit, and especially to her continued recovery. It's Beaumont Restaurant Week. The week-long celebration celebrates the city's vibrant food scene at local restaurants. They serve you up some special menus, unique dishes, and delicious deals that highlight the best of Beaumont's culinary talent. So you can go to beaumontcbb.com/restaurantweek to download the digital pass and start collecting points with every meal. The more you dine, the more you win. It's the perfect excuse to support local, explore new flavors, and treat yourself to some great meal deals through Saturday, November 8th. And finally, the Jefferson Theater is turning 98. So you want to join us as we celebrate the incredible milestone for one of Beaumont's most beloved landmarks? On Thursday, November 14th, we'll mark the occasion with a special screening of "It's a Wonderful Life," live music from local favorite Hunter Courts, and a slice of birthday cake. Doors open at 6:00. The movie starts at 7:00, so come be a part of nearly a century of history, music, and movie magic at the Jefferson Theater. And that's all for this week's announcements.
Thank you. Welcome, Mayor Becky Ames. I see you came in. And now we're going to have a presentation from Mr. Sam Haas of the Comprehensive Plan Process and Introduction by Abel City. He's with Abel City. I'm sorry, I kind of butchered that.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, Mr. Williams, city staff, thank you for having us out. So let me make sure the presentation is... One sec. That'd be great. I'll just fly through those slides. Okay. Sure. Do I need to unplug from the... So my name is Samuel Haas. I'm here from Abel City. We are a planning and architecture firm from San Antonio, Texas. That is where we're headquartered. We do have offices, however, in McAllen, in Laredo, in Miami, Florida, and then also in El Paso. Okay? Can you just go to the... Is there... Do I have a clicker or something up here? Sure. So as I mentioned, we're based out of San Antonio, Texas. We have over 40 years of experience. We have 30-plus employees. We've done numerous planning and policy projects. Some of those include Clint, Thomasville, Georgia. We've even done Laredo and El Paso as well. So here is our team sitting in the back of the room today. So again, my name is Samuel Haas. We also have Mario Pina and Alfonso. Jason's here as well, and Victoria's going to be working on the project as well. So here's kind of the roadmap for the Comprehensive Plan. You'll see that, you know, we've done a little bit of work already, have a little data collection in the beginning, in the first couple of months before we got here. And really, what we were doing is we were kind of understanding Beaumont's history, some of the data that we could find before we got here, such as like, you know, where the founding industries are, right? And then also like how the city has been shaped by development and how that history has really influenced the place of Beaumont. So, you know, we also look at things like population demographics, housing. We look at employment, industries, things like this. We also look at things, you know, Beaumont is not on an island, right? It is in a wider region. We look at how that influences Beaumont as well. Some of the things we're also looking at is the zoning and land use and how that has impacted Beaumont. But the Comprehensive Plan really also builds on past efforts, right? So there's other plans that the city has, you know, really, really done a great job of having some community vision, and we want to build upon that. And that's really what the Comprehensive Plan is, one of the functions of it is. So what is a Comprehensive Plan? You know, the meaning is in the name. It's comprehensive, right? It's all-encompassing. But what it really boils down to, it is a community's long-term vision for the growth and development of Beaumont. Why does it matter? You know, it really, it guides how Beaumont grows. It really shapes housing and parks and neighborhoods, helps attract businesses, ensures infrastructure keeps up with growth, also reflects community vision. You know, who uses this? So, you know, you have, the city leaders use this for making decisions. The residents, you know, help keep the city accountable because it is their vision after all. Businesses and developers, you know, they really, really kind of use it to learn how and where and when to invest, right? And the future generations, this is a long-term plan. They're going to use this as well. So the plan really has these eight kind of overarching elements. There's housing, there's land use and urban design, there's multimodal transportation and infrastructure, there's parks, economic development, public services and facilities, there's resiliency, and there's also cultural and historic preservation. So here we are today at the... Last night was a really great kickoff meeting. We had an excellent turnout. Mr. Williams was there, the mayor showed up as well. It was awesome. We had a really, a lot of great public input. We did two separate presentations. Again, great presentation, great turnout. And, you know, we really emphasize community engagement. That's kind of Abel City's emphasis, right? So we work on our public outreach. We do a lot of listening and learning. You know, there's only so much we can learn on the desktop computer, so we like to come out and to the community and fill those gaps, right? We bring stakeholders into the room. We like to talk to educational institutions. We like to talk to, you know, tech staff. We like to talk to the county, things like that. We bring everybody who's stakeholders. We also, we don't just take notes, we also design in public too. The community is involved heavily in shaping the plan, and we do that onsite. You know, we have many different types of community engagement, workshops, pop-ups, online surveys, things like that. But really, the one thing I want to stress is our five-day charrette, as we heard in the announcements earlier. This will be from, in February, from the 9th through the 13th. It's open house style. We'll also do some focus groups in there as well, but it's 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. every day, and you can come and go. We have a lot of engagement activities. And just so everyone in the audience knows, there are save-the-date cards at the front where the sign-in sheet is. Feel free to take as many as you'd like, pass them out. We really want to get the word out that this charrette's happening in February. This is where we really, really kind of get down into the nuts and bolts of the plan, and we really get a lot of that great community input. So there'll be a steering committee as well. And then also, we're looking at various different logos and branding that we'll be working with the Communications Department. We have some options, and the city is kind of going to vote on some of these, and we'll be working with the team there. So that is my presentation. Thank you so much for having me.
Thank you, sir. And it was an excellent evening last night. Y'all did an excellent job. And thank Jess Prince and Demi Inman for working with the General Land Office to get the grant for the city of Beaumont for this study. Now we have a presentation on the Municipal Tennis Center from Mr. Jimmy Neal, City of Beaumont Recreation Director. Afternoon.
This is really cool.
Yeah, it is.
So if you guys recall, two weeks ago at the prior council meeting, it was brought up for us to do a presentation about the tennis center and kind of everything, background, history, whatever. So we're going to do that here today. Next slide, please. This is, we'll go over revenue and expenses. You see the five-year period here shortly. The tennis center itself, I mean, it's such a great facility, something we're super proud of. There's been additions, things added, additions and things added. There's been additions through the years to make it bigger, better, and what we've found is people that come in from all over the state of Texas, even Louisiana, and wherever else they want to come in from, they love the place. They, they talk about how nice it is, how clean it is, how as a public facility, it's very uncommon to have a place that looks like that. So we'll get into, I've done the five years. Obviously, we know the COVID was a little bit odd, so we've looked at the last five years. You see revenues are pretty steady. You see the big jump in '24. That's really when pickleball started jumping up locally, where people started really showing up at the center, and when we got the new courts added or the lines added. Expenses, that is paying for, paying for staff, paying for new tennis nets, you know, anything that may happen, all the expenses with the pro shop, anything that we have to do internally. Those are going to stay pretty steady. You see in '25, it was down. We had some staffing openings, so that's, that's just part of, comes with the territory. Next slide, please. Those fees, by the way, those revenues that you see are from daily court rentals, tournaments. SETA, the Southeast Texas Tennis Association, which is an incredible partner of ours, they pay, utilize our courts for their leagues. A lot of schools host their tournaments at our place, because most schools are not going to have 20 to 24 tennis courts. So it just makes sense that we would utilize a bunch of different opportunities. The court fees range from $2 to $5 per court, depending upon the time you get there. If you're a junior or a senior, it's $2 per player at all times. If you're a citizen, if you live outside of the city of Beaumont, that goes up to $3. Other than that, if you're just a normal citizen, it's $4 after 4:00 p.m. Out of city, $5 after 4:00 p.m. So we'll get into historical information. So the original pro shop, and I believe courts 1 through 8 were built with that pro shop. If you recall, the original pro shop was the one that burned down about six weeks ago, probably. We hadn't been utilizing that, anything other than outside restrooms and a little bit of storage for the last few years since the new one was built. But we assume, we believe those courts, those courts 1 through 8 were built then, in around 1975. I did not work for the city in 1975, so I can't confirm that 100%, but I feel pretty confident with that. Courts 9 through 16, which is two sets of courts just to the south of Courts 5 through 8, those were built around 2009. The new pro shop, which we have now, which is, again, incredible, Courts 17 through 20, and then the covered courts, which are numbered 21 through 24, opened around 2016. That was something that was done with, I believe, it ended up costing the city about $3.2 million for the upgrade. Just, just a great addition. So resurfacing, you've got tennis courts, you've got anything outside, weather is going to become an issue at some point. Courts get resurfaced. Courts 1 through 4 and 9 through 12 were resurfaced in 2020, cost about $23,000 per pod, pod being the four-court, you know, grouping. 5 through 8 and 13 through 16, we've asked for those to be resurfaced a couple times in our capital plan for the next year. Hasn't been approved yet. Spoke with facilities maintenance this week, and they believe the cost will probably be pretty similar, which is pretty cool, because most things from 2020 to now have gone up dramatically. But we feel like if we could resurface those courts, it would still cost around the same, about $23,000, $25,000 to $25,000 per those, that pod. Next, we'll go into usage and participation. So you see that the tennis center hosts numerous tournaments throughout the year. Those include school tournaments, fundraising tournaments, any kind of event, something like that. You've got SETA, which we named before, which, again, most of what happens out there would never have happened if it wasn't for SETA. SETA really spearheaded, along with counsel, the addition of those eight courts in 2016, along with the new pro shop. The Labor Day Tournament, which, in Beaumont, Texas, is the longest continually-running tennis tournament in the state of Texas. We get so much positive feedback from the players that participate. Seems like a large number of the players are from Houston. We get Tyler, we get Waco. Again, we get people from other areas, but fairly regional East Texas, Southeast Texas. You see right there, it says that people stated it's the best public facility they've ever played at. That says a lot. You know, that really does say a lot. They don't just talk about, hey, the tournament was great. It's, the facility is outstanding. We've got six courts that include pickleball lines. You guys have heard me talk about pickleball like crazy for the last five, six years, so you know those exist. And fiscal year '26, the CIP is, we're expecting to get six new courts added. So part of the reason for this discussion is the Southland Conference Tournament is going to be held at the tennis center. They've hosted it there before. Every time they've hosted it, they've raved about the facility. I mentioned to you Courts 5 through 8, 13 through 16, probably need resurfacing. I'll show you some photos here shortly. And they could use resurfacing, but it doesn't mean they're unplayable. We've already met with Lamar. We're already planning to adjust the schedule around, which would mean they would compete on Courts 1 through 4. Courts 9 through 12, they would use Courts 5 through 8, 13 through 16 for practice. No one's going to be out anything. They're still going to be able to use the courts. It's not a problem. We go to the next group, next one, please. You'll start to see some photos we got. There's our pro shop. The grounds are maintained by the parks, the parks employees that also oversee and manage the athletic complex, which is just adjacent, which includes mowing the softball fields, getting those ready, weed eating, picking up trash. Next slide, please. All the, all you're going to see here is photos, another angle, covered courts over to the end and to the left, you see the loggia, which is a really cool word. That's an area for people to sit up kind of a little bit higher, to look down on those courts and watch play. Next slide, please. There's a picture, and these pictures were all taken this week. So there's Courts 1 through 4, looked really good to me. Next, you'll see, hopefully, 5 through 8, if I got those in order, which is a good thing. 5 through 8, just a little bit faded, but perfectly playable. You see people out there playing on them right now, or for the sake of the photo. Courts 9 through 12, again, were resurfaced in 2020. You see those there. Next to them, you'll see 13 through 16. These are the ones that I feel like are most in dire need. You see at the very bottom of that picture, you see some sort of discoloration around the baseline. Are they safe for play? Absolutely. They're perfectly fine to play. They don't look as good. They could use some resurfacing. Next, you'll see 17 through 20, which, again, these were built in around 2016 when they opened. And next to that, you'll see Courts 21 through 24, which are indoor covered courts, which that's pretty, that's pretty sweet. I mean, honest to goodness, that's, that's a great opportunity for people to play, which what we do find, and I don't want to say anything bad up here, we're here to talk about good things. Sometimes the, it gets a little humid in there, it gets a little sticky. Again, it's Beaumont, Texas. It's not always like it is today. If it was, more people would live here. But this is, this is a beautiful facility. We're ecstatic to have it. We love what we, what we offer and what we can provide for the citizens and also the people that come in from out of town. And that's it for my presentation. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Yes, Councilman Williams.
The building that burnt down, I mean, was there any insurance money that we're collecting from that?
So the cost to cover that on our insurance was worth, we'd have paid more than the building was worth.
Okay.
So we didn't file an insurance claim on it because there, according to maintenance and to Mr. Neal, there was nothing of value
I got you.
in the building. So we opted to not file it on our insurance, obviously, just with anything, you file a claim, it goes up. So we actually preferred to do the demo, just demo the building and not rebuild it and not file a claim. So that was, that was the less expensive response for that.
And then with the Southland Tournament coming up, I noticed there's nowhere for people to sit and watch. Has there ever been any talks of stands?
Courts 1 through 4, and I believe 5 through 8 have a little bit, 1 through 4 have some bleachers over there. It's not, it's not, it sounds really cool that the Southland Conference is holding their event here, and it is, believe me. It's not a heavily viewed event, as far as tons of people sitting out there watching.
Okay. And then what about lighting? Have we transitioned to LED?
We have not transitioned to LED. That's something that we're looking to do throughout the system. Obviously, it's not very cheap. We would love to do so. We, it's, anybody that's got any outdoor lighting knows that LED is pretty much the way to go.
Councilman Hilliard, then Councilman Turner.
Yeah. When was the last time we raised the fees?
We have not raised the fees since the, the new facility was, was put in. We said about 16 or so. We've stayed consistent.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Turner?
That was kind of my question. Did we kind of do like analysis to kind of land, see where we land with the, with the fees we charge? Is it kind of similar to other facilities that are like size, the two to three?
I'm not sure. It's hard to tell, honestly, because a lot of public facilities do not charge. So if you go play tennis at Rogers Park, Caldwell Park, Central Park, any other places that have courts, there's no fee for those. So we treat the Beaumont Municipal Tennis Center a little bit different, as I believe it should be. So we do charge fees for that. We've got staff there. We don't have staff at the other courts. So a lot of city facilities do not charge. There are some that do. I'm not going to be blind to that, but I don't know all those numbers. We could do some more digging if need be, but people don't balk at our cost. We've never been directed that we need to generate X amount of dollars. It's more quality-of-life opportunity for us. The fact that we do generate the revenue that we do, we feel pretty, pretty happy with that.
Overstood. That was my follow-up, or you getting pushed back about the two to three bucks, but you said people don't really...
No. You know, initially, people were bothered because they're used to paying nothing. But once we closed the facility in, because before we put the new pro shop in, there was no fence for us to be able to keep people essentially out. And what we do now, Courts 1 through 4 are accessible to the public when we are closed. So if the courts are not open yet, you can get in Courts 1 through 4 without having to pay. Once we open the facility, we go and lock that gate, so people have to come through the pro shop and pay for their court rental.
And my last question, I know it's not that many bleachers out there, but I have been there. You can actually go upstairs and sit and watch the game? Is that an option?
If you, when you're on Courts 13 to 16, you can, up on the loggia. But the other courts, I mean, I guess if you want to bring a ladder, you could hop up top and do, I think that's what was done with the, with the photos that were taken.
Yeah. I don't recommend a ladder at all, guys.
I wouldn't, you know. But if you're really that into it and you want to bring a ladder out there, you know, we'll open up the side gate for you.
All right. Thank you. That's it for me, Mayor.
All right. Any other questions? Great presentation.
Thank you.
And for those that are here for presentations and would like to leave, now's the time to do so. At the close of the meeting today, city council will adjourn into executive session to discuss or deliberate, deliberate economic development negotiations in accordance with Section 551.087 of the Government Code to wit specifically Project Greenfield and Project Titan. On a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with this chapter in accordance with Section 551.071 of the Government Code, will be discussed in the opinion of city county, city attorney regarding EMS staffing and potential litigation. Now we're going to move into public comments, and now's the time for any citizen who wishes to speak. You may make public comment on the consent agendas or regular agenda items 1 through 12, or any other topics. However, items 13 and 14 have already been heard in public hearing, therefore, citizens cannot speak on those items. The city clerk will call your name when it's your time to speak. When you approach the podium, please say your address, your city and state. You will have three minutes for public comments. The green light will come on when you approach the podium, and the red light will come on when your time is up. And just please remember that while at the podium, members of council will not be able to respond to your comments regarding items that are posted, we've discussed during the posted time. However, we will have somebody from city staff address it.
Kate Hambright, is it seven, Chelsea Hollow?
Cheska.
Cheska Hollow, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon, Mayor Weston, city council members. My name is Kate Hambright, and I'm the marker chair for the Jefferson County Historical Commission. I'm here today to talk in support of the placement of the Patillo versus State historical marker in front of the historic Civilian Conservation Corps building at Terrell Park. In 1930, Sadie Patillo, a young black teacher, refused to sit in a segregated portion of a Beaumont city bus. This act of civil disobedience resulted in a ruling from Texas highest criminal court declaring Section 1659 of Texas penal statutes, the state's separate coach law, did not apply to motor buses. Sadie's victory came more than two decades before Rosa Parks refused to leave the seat she occupied on a Montgomery, Alabama, city bus. The decision was a monumental ruling for its day, and it remains a milestone in the history of public accommodation segregation in Texas. Sadie Patillo's family has a close connection to Terrell Park and has specifically requested that the marker be installed on its grounds. The historical marker will have excellent visibility at this location. The park is visited not only by numerous local residents, but also many travelers to our area who are interested in its facilities, including birding, physical recreation, its botanical gardens, and the beautifully restored CCC building itself. This historical marker will provide an opportunity to educate all visitors on Sadie Patillo's story, as well as serve as a springboard to deeper conversation as we work to broaden our understanding of this complicated period in our American history. I'd, I would also like to add that the Patillo versus State marker is only one of 15 marker topics approved by the Texas Historical Commission in 2024 during its competitive undertow marker program, a special project of the THC to annually document significantly underrepresented subjects across the state. Thank you.
Thank you.
Teresa Goodness, 985 19th Street, Beaumont, Texas.
Hello, Mayor, Council. I'm Teresa Goodness, the Chair of the Jefferson County Historical Commission. I promise we're not bringing every member of the commission up here to speak today. But we wanted to invite you personally to two marker dedications that we're going to be holding November the 15th, Saturday. At 10:00 a.m., we're having one on the corner of Crockett and Archie Streets for Pandit Mahar Chand. And then the same day, Saturday, November 15th, at 1 o'clock, we're going to host another marker dedication on the corner of Inca Street and Ollie Street to recognize the Blanchett Cemetery. So you know, may know there's been a lot of work done at those cemeteries recently, and we've been trying to get as many historic Texas cemetery designations as we can to recognize those. So I hope you'll all come out and help us celebrate our history. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alfred Dean, 9690 Meadowbrook Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
How you doing, Mayor and Counsel? I just wanted to speak on the city of Beaumont. I say we have a good city. As some of y'all may know, my youngest son came up missing a couple days ago. And what I mean to tell you, BISD cops, Beaumont Police Department, we had thousands of people in one area. And I'm saying all to say that we came together as a family to look for one child. As I look through Facebook posts and see our city councilmen post certain things, I disagree with a lot of things. I feel that as a councilman, we keep everything professional. We need to work as a team. I'm a guy that, I ran a couple years ago, everybody know, and I'm also a guy that works behind the scene with underprivileged youth, a lot of them. On any Saturday, I might have 10 to 15 boys at my house, all come from single-parent homes. So, and this sport that I'm going to talk about is basketball. When I go to Houston, Texas, I'm not saying thousands, I'm saying you see thousands of people supporting it. We have one recreation center in Beaumont for thousands of kids. And we imagine while we're getting kids getting in trouble. If we can come together as a city and build the ones that I see that we have on the proposition, watch how many kids lives changed. I'm only one coach. We have 20 plus coaches that pay out their pockets. I have some of our councilmen I'm grateful for because they have sponsored and helped my kids. When I say my kids, these are not my biological kids. These are kids I've been working with since the age of eight. Now they're 15, 16, 17 year old boys. I've had some kids right now that are serving in the Navy. I have some kids that's in college, from one person. Imagine if everybody come together like they did with my son and build a whole future. Beaumont is a great city. I'm from Beaumont. I was that bad kid in ninth grade. I had one cop that stood up and said, hey, I'm gonna help you. And then I went to the Army. I'm 44 years old. I don't have a police record. All I have is good things from one person. So I'll just say, I ask that we continue to just move forward and let's keep all the negative. We have an opinion about some proposition or something, let's keep it off the internet. Let's work as a team and just agree to disagree. I like the prayer that she said earlier. I ask that if anything that's in somebody that's negative, let's keep it out of the media and let's move forward our city. I think we have a great council. I know, I voted for my councilman. I keep voting. If you see me, I'm voting. So I thank Mr. Joey Hiller, Mr. Albert Turner. He called me, the mayor called me. I'm a hands-on guy. Y'all don't see me in the limelight because I'm not like a camera guy. I like to sit behind the scenes and do what I'm supposed to do. And thank y'all for listening.
Thank you, sir.
Jeanette Harvey, 4205 Sarah Street, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon, everyone. Yes, my name is Jeanette Harvey, and I live at 4205 Sarah. And I had several issues, which one of the issues had been solved. And they had the drainage company district, I'm sorry, drainage district, they came out and cut the grass. I live in a senior community. And we had problems sitting outside with the snakes and whatever. And now they didn't start keeping the grass down. So I was wondering if they was going to continue on doing this? Or I have to keep calling in for it or what? So, and then my other issue is I stay in the Perachi area. And everywhere I look, I can go to the store's trash, go to church, it's trash everywhere. It's no one seems to go out and pick the trash up. You know, it's just ridiculous in our area. And the grass and all this, everywhere you look. So I'm just wondering, who do I reach out to for this? Because I found it was drainage district that was supposed to cut the grass in front of our complex. So I got that solved. So I was just wanting to say that to see if they can keep on doing it, to keep the rodents and snakes and whatever out of our area. Thank y'all.
Thank you, ma'am.
Beth Wells, 6890 Glen Willow, Beaumont, Texas. Mr. Wells, okay. Sorry, I didn't see you back there.
Good afternoon, council, staff, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say a heartfelt thank you to our council members who have led us in our first Veterans Coalition meeting. It was very well attended. We had a lot of helpers that were there and people that know what's, how to help veterans and where to find the veterans to help them. So we're very excited about that. We're very happy to see an idea turn into action, and we hope we can keep that going. But I did want to make sure that there are a few events, veteran events next week. Of course, next Tuesday is Veterans Day. I'm one of those veterans that I don't like to do much on Veterans Day because it's mine. But I will be out and about. On Monday, the 10th, right here at the Lakeside Center at 9:00 a.m., Decker Blevins with the Military Veterans Peer Network out of Spindletop will be providing a seminar on accessing VA benefits, how to start that process, how to get onto the technical side of it, like getting onto va.gov, getting veterans into My Healthy Vet, so they can they can schedule all their appointments, talk to all their doctors right there on their phone. It's a really great service, but it's just a lot of folks don't know about it. So that's at 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. at the Lakeside Center. And then on Tuesday, at M&amp;D Supply on College, one of a fantastic supporter of ours, the Military Veterans Peer Network is also hosting a free pancake breakfast for all veterans from 8:00 to 10:00 o'clock. So not many of us need more pancakes, but I guarantee you we will be there to get them. And we really appreciate that. And again, just a reminder to the community that this is a happy day, right? This is a day of celebration. We take some more solemn tactics on Memorial Day and other days, but this is a day to say thank you. This is a day to have a barbecue. This is a day to go out in the park and play. And if you really want to honor our veterans today, please go vote. Go Navy. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Delala Johnson, 2840 Glenwood, Beaumont, Texas. Delala Johnson? Okay.
Good day. This is for the City Council members. It's just some herbs that we grew at our community garden with Urban Roots Forum to Table. And so we had an event on Sunday, and we appreciate everyone coming out and support. It was our first farmer's market. We looked at our sign in list. We had over 230 people in a community to come out. For the people in a community, that was like an historical thing for the Fort Worth community because we got to see people give to one another. We got to see businesses support other businesses in that community and keep the community running efficiently. So Urban Roots' goal is to focus on urban community building, making sure that the community knows who our commissioners are, who our mayors are. Like out about, like if I stood in front of the grocery store in Fort Worth and I said, well, who's the mayor of Beaumont? They don't know. So my goal is to educate them and let them know who our mayor is, who our commissioner is, to let them know that the pen is mightier than the sword. You know, if you have an issue, come and tell the city council members because you can't fix anything if people don't know. And a lot of people talk about something called the Murphy Law. Anything that can go wrong can go wrong, if I'm saying that right. But will go wrong. Anything that can go wrong will go wrong. And so we have the opportunity as a community to fix, to turn our wrongs right. And so, like I said, our goal is to teach the community to be self-sufficient through urban gardening and supporting one another. And so I'm just grateful for the event that we had and how the city and the city officials came out and supported, even though some of y'all were not there. I know that you guys did tell other people to come out because we had a coalition of people out there. We had different races. I seen like four different nationalities at our farmer's market, and we were very proud of that. We didn't have any fights. We didn't have, we didn't have any issues. Everyone was happy. We had fresh produce. We had medication. We had herbs and different things for people. And so these are teas that I brought for you guys to try. And whatever you're not going to use, just leave it in the office, and I'll come back and pick it up. You just boil some water and steep it. And a lot of this stuff helps with stress and it helps with health. So I'm going to leave this here. And if y'all need to call me, ask me how to use these things. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
James Callis, 5375 Rosemary Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
Men of council, Mayor West, city attorney, city manager, city clerk, and all those presidents. I'm James Callis. I'm a lifelong resident of Beaumont. I've enjoyed being a resident here. I went through the schools here. I like to mention them because they no longer exist, as Junker Elementary, Dick Dowlin Jr. High, Beaumont High School. I'm a '72 graduate of Lamar University with a Bachelor of Science in Math and Earth Science, a former high school math teacher. I'm in construction now. I'm a licensed real estate broker. I'm a licensed master plumber. I'm a licensed electrician. I'm a licensed registered AC tech, and I just can't seem to find enough things to do. But I'm here today because I'm trying to finish and save a house I started at Magnolia, 245 Magnolia. The city has decided that it's time to tear it down. Now, I must tell you, I was one of the ones that put a brand-new Windstorm certified roof on it. I put a new water heater in it. I've hired a licensed electrician to put a new service on it, and we're probably 80% complete. Now, the problem is I have gotten sick, and I've recently had heart surgery. And I got to tell you, I didn't get a good job. I had three grafts, two of them have failed. I've been in the hospital in and out the past 12 weeks, and I just got out of St. Luke's on the 18th. Now, some days, things are good. Today seems to be a good one. Some days, I can't even walk. But I've lost my strength, and so I don't want you to think I know Mr. Durso one time wanted to help me with a project, and I understand that. I have people help me now. I cannot do it like I used to. I was a very active senior before my heart. I want to finish this house. This house happens to be Anamia's House for homeless women. It is not going to be exactly what I started because I don't have the health anymore, but it will be the reduced rent or something for women. That's what it was intended to do. So I know with the sweep of the hand, y'all could give me an extension. Silas said he was not going to tear it down right away, but it's scheduled to be tore down, and that makes no sense to me. This is an 80% complete house. It's completely shut up, and if you put electricity to it right now, it would work. But the city and the Red Tag Program in particular tends to be a little too strict. I will say this, somebody called me for a plumbing inspection, and I found out that they get a six-month permit for $55. My cost is 300 minimum for a TRO. There seems to be no other solution for me to continue my project, and I will get that. But that money should go to the city instead of the county.
Thank you, sir.
Addie Allen, 9695 Gross, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon, City Manager, Mayor, Council Administrators, and my fellow citizens that are here and are concerned. I would like to say that I saw that Good Sam's program, and that is so wonderful. So I know it's on the agenda today, and I hope that council members will be able to spread the news, you know, to organizations like they've done with the proposals because it's a good thing. I don't know why it's coming out of London, but wherever it's coming from, it's a good thing for seniors and everybody that now may not have insurance or benefits for that matter because we're in a crisis. The other thing that I wanted to talk about is there was a speed program that was presented at one time for the neighborhoods, and I wonder if we could get the status of that because we have grandchildren in our neighborhood and kids in the street. They're playing, and not that they start off playing in the street, but they're kids. So I think it was saying that if there's four people with a petition on the street, you could do a study. So I'd like to know, you know, if that's going to resurge or where it is because my neighborhood need it. We've got four-wheelers zipping up and down the street with little kids driving, and that's a concern. So thank you for your service, and God bless you. And whatever you do in this saga with the city, the proposals or whatever, I wish our administrators well. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Mayor.
All right, thank you. We're going to move into the consent agenda, but we are pulling item N today, so that will not be a part of the consent agenda. So is there a motion in a second for approval of the consent agenda without item N? Yes, sir. Just if you get your mic.
Move to approve.
All right, we have a motion. And we have a second. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? Okay, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, removing item N, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Thank you. Mr. City Manager, may we move into item number one?
Thank you, Mayor. Council consider resolution authorizing the city manager or their designate to enter into a 10-year contract with Axon Enterprise Incorporated of Scottsdale, Arizona for the Officer Safety Plan plus OSP plus bundle, and it comes with the recommendation of approval.
Is there a motion for item number one?
Make a motion, we approve.
There is a motion and a second for item number one. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number one, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number two?
Council consider resolution authorizing the city manager to execute change order number one to the contract with TRP Construction Group LLC for the citywide pavement marking Phase IV project, and it comes with the recommendation of approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion for item number two?
Move to approve.
Second.
There is a motion and a second for item number two. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number two, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number three?
Council consider resolution to authorize the installation of a state historical marker highlighted in Patillo versus State in Terrell Park, and it comes with the recommendation of approval of the resolution.
Second.
All right, there's a motion. And a second, did you get who that was for item number three? Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number three, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number four?
Council consider resolution authorizing the city manager to water contract to Elite Contractors of Kirbyville for the athletic complex rehabilitation of parking lots and Inglebrook Drive project, and it comes with the recommendation of approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion for item number four?
Second.
There is a motion and a second for approval of item number four. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number four, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number five?
Council to consider resolution approving annual maintenance from a vendor for network security hardware used by all city departments, and it comes with the recommendation of approval.
Is there a motion for item number five?
Move to approve.
Second.
There is a second. Is there any discussion on item number five? All those in favor of approving item number five, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number six?
Council consider resolution authorizing the city manager to water contract to East Tech's utility construction of Beaumont for the Feltro Drainage Improvement Project, and it comes with the recommendation of approval.
Is there a motion? Is there a motion for item number six?
Move to approve.
Second.
There is a motion and a second for approval of item number six. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number six? Do you have a question? Councilman Crenshaw?
Thank you. Have we ever done work before with East Tech's Utility Construction, Molly?
To my knowledge, yes, we have, and I but with the particular projects that we have done with them are not coming to mind, but I can get that information and share it after the council meeting.
Okay. Can we give any preference to contractors that have done work for us before that have done exemplary work? Is that allowed?
I'd have to defer to legal on that.
So genuinely, if there hasn't been a problem with the lowest bidder, we typically don't bypass them. The rule is, it's the lowest bidder providing the best service. So for example, if a bidder who was the lowest bidder had done work for the city before and we were either not satisfied with their work or had multiple problems with that vendor, we would request the council go with the second lowest bidder, even if we hadn't done work with them before, just based on the problems with the other vendor. So there's really not a way to bypass. It's the lowest bidder providing the best possible service. So unless we've had negative interactions with that bidder in the past, or that bidder was unable to provide satisfactory references, or the references that they provided were not favorable, then we could bypass because we would have some concerns about them not providing the best value to the city. So those are the safe boundaries that we get to work within, but council could adopt an objective policy that says that they would prefer to give bidder preference to people who've worked with the city in the past. The problem with that is that those bids might be higher.
Understood. And so it's staff's position that we've had no issues before with East Tech's Utility Construction?
Yes, sir.
Okay. With that, I have nothing further.
All right. All those in favor of approving item number six, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number seven?
Council consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute change order number three to the contract with C-Tech's Construction Corporation for the Fennett Road Sidewalk Improvement Project, and it comes with the recommendation of approval.
Is there a motion for item number seven?
Move for approval.
There is a motion and a second for item number seven. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number seven, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number eight?
Council consider resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with CDM Smith, Inc. to continue management of the municipal separate storm sewer system, MS4 system permit for the city of Beaumont for fiscal year 2026, and it comes with the recommendation of approval.
Is there a motion for item number eight? There is a motion and a second for item number eight. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number eight, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Have a cell phone? Okay. All right. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number nine?
Thank you, Mayor. Council consider resolution authorizing the city manager to execute change order number two to the contract with C-Tech's Construction Corporation of Beaumont, Texas for the 23rd Street Senator Sewer Truck Line Rehabilitation Phase One Project, and it comes with the recommendation of approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion for item number nine?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion and a second for approval of item number nine. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number nine, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number 10?
Council consider granting a new solid waste franchise agreement to Waste Pro USA. It comes with the recommendation of approval of the ordinance.
Is there a motion for item number 10?
So moved to approve.
There is a motion and a second for approval of item number 10. Is there any discussion? Councilman Turner?
Mayor, I had someone call me prior to the meeting and ask for somebody to explain how these agreements work and if it'd benefit to the city, and I said I would ask.
Do we have anybody that can address that in the meeting today?
Well, I'll attempt to explain how these work. The city currently has 11 entities that was approved by city council to have a franchise or a non-exclusive franchise agreement. So these are entities that use our solid waste landfill to dump their trash, and in order for them to do that, they have to have an ordinance that has to be approved by city council, and the city charges a 7% franchise fee, which is revenue to the fund in order to pay for operations of the solid waste department.
Yeah, that's pretty much how I kind of explained it, but I just wanted to make sure I doubled down on it and I heard it from staff as well. Thank you.
All right.
Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor of approving item number 10, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number 11?
Council consider a request to abandon the 30-feet alleyway between Cartwright Division G and the Southern Pacific Railroad right of way with the following condition. If approved, the applicant shall obtain an appraisal and title search report for the property to be abandoned at their expense. Appraisal and title search report must be submitted to the planning office along with proof that payment has been arranged prior to the item being placed on city council. And with that, it's recommended for approval.
All right. Is there a motion for item number 11?
Second.
There is a motion and a second for item number 11. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number 11, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number 12?
Council consider request extended deadline to allow the expansion of a church in a GCMD II, which is a joint commercial multiple-family dwelling to district located at 5250. Hell Big Road is approved in January of 2023, and it's recommended for approval with the following conditions. Construction plans must meet all requirements for water utilities for indoor water and Senator Sewer Improvement, including any requirements of the city's backflow pre-treatment and a fog program. Two, construction plans shall be in compliance with Section 28.04.006 landscaping and screening requirements. And three, construction plans must meet all building code requirements.
Is there a motion for item number 12?
Second.
There is a motion and a second for item number 12. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number 12, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number 13?
Council consider request for rezoning from RS, which is residential single-family dwelling and AR, agricultural residential districts to PUD Plan Unit Development District, along with the specific use permit to authorize the proposed joint land use and density plan for an approximately 84-acre tract of property at the northwest intersection of Northwest Parkway and Point Parkway, and it comes with the recommendation of approval of the ordinance.
Okay. Before I ask for a motion, we're going to have two motions on this item, and so it would require two votes. And the first motion is about rezoning from the residential single-family dwelling and agricultural residential to a planned unit development district. So if somebody would like to make that motion?
So the motion would just be, because that's a lot to say, but the motion would be I move to accept the recommendation to change the zoning. Something that simple will be allowed.
Simple, stump them. So if somebody wants to make a motion about just rezoning that property, then we'll deal with this.
Make motion to approve the recommendation to rezone that property?
We have a motion and a second for rezoning the property. Is there any discussion? All those in -- Councilman Crenshaw?
If they decide to put apartment complexes here, will they have to come back to get an additional approval for that?
Yes, sir. Any development that's different from the land use plan, which is on the specific use permit portion of this approval or this review, any changes to that land use plan would have to come back before planning commission and then also council.
All right. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right. Councilman Turner?
Yeah, I understand that question. I was reading, so they're saying they're projecting 404 new single-family lots, basically single-family homes, correct?
Yes, sir. It's going to be largely a neighborhood development with amenities with also a, I think it's one point acres near the northwest Parkway area, reserved for commercial space.
Yeah, I'm familiar with pids and pods. Yeah, they're good developments. Thank you.
All right. If there's no other discussion on the motion for rezoning, item number 13, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. And the second motion is regarding the specific use permit, and I'm sure it can be just as simple as making a motion for the specific use permit regarding the 84-acre tract there at the property.
So you can say I move to approve the specific use permit.
I move to approve the specific use permit.
There is a motion and a second for approval of the specific use permit there at the corner of Northwest Parkway and Point Parkway. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving the specific use permit, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. May I have the reading of item number 14, Mr. City Manager?
Council consider an ordinance for revocation or modification of an approved amended specific use permit to allow charter school within the GCMD, which is a joint commercial multiple-family dwelling district for property located at 4055 Calder Avenue. And at the joint public hearing, it was approved, so with the following conditions. Vehicle queuing and parking shall not occur within any right of way. The school should not exceed 700 enrolled students at this campus. Any increase in student enrollment will require an amendment to the specific use permit, which must be approved prior to implementing the increase. Three, any modifications to the traffic management plan shall be submitted to the city's traffic engineer for review and approval prior to implementation. And four, yearly enrollment shall be reported to planning staff at a minimum of one month prior to the start of school and submit modifications to enrollment submitted as needed.
All right. Is there a motion for item number 14?
Make a motion, we approve.
There is a motion for item number 14. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion and a second, and Councilman Turner for discussion on item 14.
I think we all know there's been a consistent, you know, issue in the city of Beaumont with traffic, and I see we are monitoring the amount of students, but what stipulations are in place to ensure we're getting accurate numbers? Are we just going to go to report that they give us? Are we actually going to be doing the monitoring ourselves?
They have to give us, per the condition, the fourth condition, they have to submit to us one month prior to the school year what their enrollment is. That's also verified through, I know it's in the memo, the name of it, but the national education statistics so that we can verify those numbers. But to my understanding from Principal Vines in speaking with her, 700 is the cap for that school as of now. But again, any increase must come before planning commission and council.
Yeah, my reason asking because I'm not familiar if it was a cap in the prior facility, but clearly it grown to a level where it was not controllable and conducive for our city. So I want to make sure we monitoring it, make sure we don't put ourselves in that position again.
Yes, sir. In 2009, they had a proposal of 350 students with 35 teachers. Obviously, that doubled.
Yes, my point, yeah.
And it caused, yeah, it caused a serious traffic congestion. So we've been working really hard with them and collaboratively with departments and staff to mitigate that traffic.
And to that point, that's why the condition was added. The prior SGP didn't have a reporting requirement, and so that's why the reporting requirement was added to the amended SGP's to address that concern moving forward.
And that's why my question was, if they do exceed, like they gave us a number in the past and it doubled, what do we do as a city to monitor that or hold them accountable to stay within the number that they provided?
So now that it says it shall not exceed, again, the previous one didn't have a monitoring requirement, this one says shall not exceed. If they exceed the 700, they have 701, 705, council has the ability to revoke their permit.
Okay.
Which would ultimately impact their certificate of occupancy, which allows them to be open to the public.
Thank you.
Mr. Crenshaw?
So in other words, in 2009, we gave them a specific use permit for 350 students, and they violated that for the last several years and increased enrollment to 650, and now they're coming back to us saying, oh, by the way, we'd like to increase this to 700.
Yeah, that was their original proposal, which is why it had to come back to planning commission because it was necessary to amend their SGP.
Okay. And well before I was on council, I was told over a year ago that we met with the school, and the school was going to take certain steps to help alleviate the traffic issues, and none of those were implemented until last month. Is that also your understanding?
I wouldn't say last month. I believe it's been at least three months, but it was difficult to get them to the table originally. Yes.
And that has me concerned, and that has many of the residents in Calder Place concerned, is that this company, last planning and zoning meeting, I was at, the company sent a lawyer from Houston who stood up here and basically acted like everything was great and hunky-dory and, you know, it's all just smooth and no issues. Meanwhile, I leave here and my phone's blowing up from people that live within Calder Place saying, that's not accurate. Yes, things have improved this school year with traffic, but there's still a long way to go. So my concern is that we're just going to amend the specific use permit to add these things, and we still have work to do to improve the area. So I guess I'm asking that this be modified, that we have a status update with planning and zoning, maybe at the beginning of January, at the January planning and zoning meeting, where the school sends their representative back, and the things that have still not been addressed that are concerns for Calder Place residents, that they have the opportunity to come back before planning and zoning and raise those issues and have a resolution. So I don't want to just agree to this and then us not have the ability to bring them back before planning and zoning in a short period of time.
So item one, because if you want to add condition, it has to be a specific condition that can be done. So item one says that if vehicles are queuing and the parking the right of way, then that can be addressed. And so there's some other things that could trigger it to return. So if you want to add a condition, it has to be something like more concrete, like if this occurs or if this doesn't happen, or I want them to do this. this occurs or if this doesn't happen, or I want them to do this, and if not, then, then it goes back. Or you can just have staff say that you want a status update in January. And so that's not necessarily a condition of the specific use permit, but it is a directive towards staff.
Could we do, could we acquire, like, item number five in the specific use permit would be quarterly, um, compliance updates with planning and zoning?
You, you can, um, you can. That, that's, that's up to council, yeah.
All right, well, then I would then make a motion to amend the specific use permit to add item number five, which requires, uh, quarterly, uh, compliance meetings, uh, with planning and zoning, uh, beginning in January of twenty twenty-six.
And you mean, like, the Planning Commission, or do you mean Planning Staff?
The Planning Commission, where we could have residents from Calder Place come before, uh, and, and, and bring up any issues that are ongoing that maybe staff doesn't see and, and, and I don't see, uh, or other members of the council don't see, but that, you know, these residents have to live with this situation every day. And, you know, there's just concern that if we just go off and grant this, uh, that we're not gonna have the teeth that we have, uh, now, especially with the history of this school, basically doing whatever they wanted. And, uh, you know, what's the old saying? It's easier to, uh, ask for forgiveness and permission. Um, but, um, anyway, they just, they haven't been in compliance for so long, it just makes me concerned that, uh, they may go back to their old habits.
So I'm wording it for the updating of the specific use permit, and I just have quarterly updates to be, um, with the Planning Commission regarding?
Uh, uh, compliance.
Compliance of?
Specific use permit conditions?
Other conditions?
Yes, Councilman Duryo?
So is, is this what normally happens when someone violates their specific use permit?
If they vi- it, it doesn't happen often, but sometimes. I think the last revocation that came before you guys was maybe two years ago for a, a property off of Harriet Street. But, but yeah, if anyone violates the, uh, proposal, uh, that is in, um, that's within the specific use permit, for example, increasing from three hundred and fifty students, then that would, uh, necessitate an amended specific use permit. Should it be granted, then they can move forward. If they violate any of the conditions, that would have to be brought back to Planning Commission to, uh, review the status of their SGP. So you could either revoke or modify, um, today. You guys have not voted on it, but today is a recommendation to modify with said conditions, and Councilman Crenshaw added a fifth condition. But if they were to violate any of them, you, it, it would come back to Planning Commission and Council for review.
What, what happens on, uh, revocation?
So if it's revoked, then the SGP is no longer on that property, then, um, their certificate of occupancy is no longer valid. So ultimately, they would need to, uh, close their business at that location.
So with this amendment, they understand that if they do this again, there's a chance that it could be revoked?
Yes, that's where, so once, I wanna say it right, uh, so once that, uh, letter was issued that, um, their SGP could possibly be revoked or, uh, modified, uh, they were, they got in touch with us pretty quick.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Hilliard?
Demi, are we also watching their new school? Because we're beginning to have a problem with the cars lining up to pick kids up going down Peyton.
So that's technically not a post-it item, so, uh, we don't wanna kinda get into that one, Councilman. Mayor, you do have a, you do have a, um, amendment on the floor that kinda needs to be addressed. Councilman Crenshaw asks, asks to add a fifth item, which would be an amendment to the motion that's on the floor.
I'll sec- I'll second his request.
So it, so did you make the original motion?
We, we need whoever.
It doesn't need a second, it either needs, it either needs to be, it can either stand on its own, on its own motion, or it needs to accept the amendment.
I accept the amendment.
Did Councilmember Hilliard made the original motion, didn't you?
Duryo did.
Hilliard. Now I have you. Duryo, second.
Well, I make a motion that we accept.
You just have to accept his motion.
I accept his motion.
Okay, so his, so the, the new motion on the floor would be, um, to add the fifth condition that quarterly updates, um, quarterly updates to the Planning Commission regarding compliance of, of the other conditions shall begin, and such update shall begin in January twenty twenty-six. No, I'm just, I'm just letting you know that that's, that's what's, that's what's included.
But the motion is.
That's, that's the new, that's the new motion.
All right. So is there any other discussion regarding, uh, item number fourteen?
Mayor, just one point of clarification. The way it's written now would be in perpetuity. So it would be every three months, this issue would be on the agenda for the Planning Commission. Is there a way to add a clause to that to say, or until such time that the Planning Commission and/or City Council deems that the reports are, can be suspended, something like that?
Yeah, I mean, I would think after a year of positive compliance, could we just, at that point, amend the specific use permit, or we need to include this language now?
If you don't include the language now, it would go on forever.
Or you'd have to go back through this process again.
Okay, well, I have no problem then, uh, changing the language to say, uh, uh, quarterly compliance reports as needed?
So it's a quarterly updates to the Planning Commission regarding compliance, compliance with the other conditions, and such update shall begin in January twenty twenty-six and go until?
Until council votes to end them.
Until a recommendation is received to?
To end the quarterly reports.
Do that.
Is there a need to amend that motion? Cause that would just be something we would just put on the agenda to remove, correct?
Correct. Well, you would amend the specific use permit.
I'm just wondering if we need to amend our amended?
No, so, so the, the motion is still the same, we're just now adding clarifying language, so you don't have to change unless Councilman Hilliard is offended by the addition of the language.
I accept.
I'm not.
No.
All right. So if there's no other discussion on item number fourteen, all those in favor of item number fourteen, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, would you please take us into the work session?
Council to review and discuss junk motor vehicles and yard parking.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Um, in the last council meeting, there were many questions surrounding junk motor vehicles, commonly referred to as JMV's, uh, and the possibility of prohibiting yard parking. I'll first, uh, touch on, uh, what a junk motor vehicle is. Next slide. Uh, a JMV is a vehicle that can move on its own and has an expired, invalid, missing, or no license plate or inspection sticker, and is either wrecked, dismantled, partially dismantled, or discarded, or not working and has stayed that way for more than seventy-two hours on public property, or, uh, more than thirty days on private property. Next slide. Anyone in the community can report a possible violation by calling three one one or using the free three one one app. When a JMV is spotted, a code officer begins the case. Once a violation is confirmed, a certified notice is mailed to the property owner and/or occupant, the registered owner of the vehicle, and any lien holders on record. These individuals then have ten days to correct the issue to bring the vehicle into compliance with city codes, specifically the junk motor vehicle ordinance. If the violation's not resolved by the eleventh day, the city can request, uh, an order from the judge allowing the vehicle to be towed and removed from the property within five days of the remove, removal. The city notifies text dot and takes possession of the vehicle. It should be noted from there that the vehicle is crushed and will never be road, roadworthy again. The entire process from observation to final disposal can take up to six weeks, um, or less. The city uses TNT towing, towing with an average cost of about seventy-five dollars per vehicle. Each year, the city spends approximately fifty-five hundred, um, in total on towing and impound services to manage JMV's throughout the city. Uh, the junk motor vehicle ordinance is applicable citywide. Next slide. So transitioning to the topic of yard parking, uh, this rule would ban, uh, parking or storage of vehicles on grass, dirt, or other unpaved areas in the front or side yards of the home. Vehicles must be parked on, on paved or approved surfaces such as concrete, asphalt, pavers, or other materials approved by the Public Works Director or their designee. This would apply to cars, trucks, buses, motorcycles, uh, trailers, campers, boats, uh, mobile homes. Next slide. So currently, the city observes these rules of yard parking, uh, within the Oaks Historic District and also the Calder Place Neighborhood. Uh, the Oaks is within a historic preservation overlay, uh, and Calder Place is within a urban design overlay. Next slide. So if the council were to consider a citywide ban on yard parking, there's both benefits and challenges to it. The benefits include protecting underground utilities, uh, preventing soil erosion or compaction, improving drainage, uh, increasing visibility and access, and reducing neighborhood blight. However, some homes may lack enough driveway or garage space, which could create parking issues for residents and visitors during events or even small gatherings, such as like gathering for the holidays. Increased, uh, pouring of concrete or similar pavement could also affect natural drainage, um, or push cars to the right of way for parking so that they can comply with a, uh, prohibition on yard parking, uh, which could make it difficult for emergency vehicles to pass, uh, especially in older neighborhoods is kind of what I think about, the, uh, maybe South End or Pear Orchard area, uh, Goliad Street comes to mind, there, it's very narrow roadways there. You can see several Texas cities have adopted similar regulations to prohibit yard parking, so it's not uncommon, um, it's done through their zoning ordinance. Next slide. So the council has several options that they could consider. First, make no changes, keep the current ordinances in place as they are, which is the junk motor vehicle ordinance, which is citywide, and the two different districts that are already identified. Uh, second, they could, you guys could adopt a citywide ban on yard, yard parking. Uh, third could be to adopt a yard parking prohibition on unpaved surfaces, but exempt, um, properties that are smaller. Um, our current, uh, minimum lot size is five thousand square feet, so any property that's smaller than that would be exempt from these regulations. Uh, fourth, you could limit the ban to only trailers, boats, and RVs. Uh, fifth, you can encourage neighborhoods that want a yard parking ban, um, to possibly create a home, homeowners association to ultimately govern themselves. If the council decides to move forward with the ban, I do ask that you consider an impact on large gatherings, um, such as, uh, churches in residential areas. The cost to residents who may need to install pavement to comply with the ordinance. Also, to enforce this type of ordinance effectively, I recommend adding code enforcement officers to staff. Without the added resources, uh, our ability to enforce it would be limited, so I do wanna be transparent and forthcoming with that, um, from the start. Uh, next slide. Uh, so these last two slides are examples of non-compliant and compliant parking, um, should council wish to move forward with it. Um, you can see there's, uh, in all of these, there's either parking in the side yard on grass areas or dirt areas. Next slide. Uh, and these are, uh, examples of compliant parking, so concrete driveways, pavers, gravel or aggregate, um, permeable pavers, asphalt, and so on. But this, this concludes the workshop. I tried to keep it as simple and quick as possible. If I could just get some feedback, if this is something that the council would like to consider in whole, or if they're not, um, otherwise, or any comments that could help me moving forward.
Councilman Hilliard?
Thank you. Uh, this has been an issue in my ward. We have a, a lot of problems with this, and, and I'm getting lots of phone calls, so, uh, thank you for taking the time to do this, and, and I think it's a big step forward for us to, to clean our city up. And so I hope the rest of the council agrees with me, but, but thank you, Demi, for what you did.
Councilman Williams?
If we adopt this and, and you do, um, you know, catch somebody parking, uh, illegally, what would the course of action be?
So it would be similar to, I'd have to build out an ordinance for it, um, so it'd take me a little bit of time. Um, but ultimately, uh, a violation would be observed, they'd give a prescribed amount of days to come into compliance. Again, try to think about that timeframe, you know, if they need to pour a driveway, if they need to install asphalt, you know, whatever they, they wish to do. If they were not to come into compliance, charges would be filed in municipal court. The goal is to work with the property owner, but ultimately, if there's no compliance, that would be the route.
So what, I mean, I'm just, if you see it and they become compliant, and then you see it again, and they're, like, and you just kinda jump back and forth, like, how does that go?
I, I see, I see what you're saying. So we, we, uh, deal with that a lot in the Oaks Historic District. Normally, if it's a property owner that we, um, have cited in past, uh, normally we have their contact information, we can call them pretty quick, and they're, they're usually, uh, amenable to come into compliance. Sometimes they're not, and so we have to go through the, the, uh, the process of sending that certified letter, um, giving them so many days to move their car, um, and so on. Um, and then if they were to not, then it does have to go before, uh, the judge in municipal court. Normally, they, they move the car. But it, sometimes there is those, those instances where they don't.
No, I think it's, uh, I think we absolutely need it. It's a constant source of complaints, especially RVs. Uh, right now, there's a boat on Edson that's, um, got a gentleman calling me constantly. Um, and, you know, if you've got your, your largest investment in your life is your home, and the person next door decides to start storing a bunch of boats in the yard or RVs in the yard, it, it is, uh, uh, an issue. And, uh, as long as, uh, I'm also, you know, someone that believes in, you know, your property's your right, you get to do what you want. So as long as it's not too rigid of a statute, I think we should obviously allow to satisfy your concerns about church parking and stuff. I think we should talk about things that are parked there more than five days or something like that. You know, if you're going out of town for a week and your neighbor, or someone going with you out of town wants to park in your yard, cause there's nowhere else to park, I don't think that that should be a big deal. But long-term, term storage of, uh, RVs and vehicles and, um, and boats on grass and yards, I think is, uh, is problematic. And I think we should make an exception if they wanna park in their backyard out of sight, that shouldn't be that big of a deal. I think this should be more focused on front yard, uh, issues. And, um, I'm concerned about making exceptions, though, for five thousand square foot lots or smaller. I'd, I'd like to know more about that. I'm not great at judging size and distance of lots, but, um, I would, you know, I don't wanna go and make an exception for, you know, uh, eighty percent of the lots, residential lots in Beaumont.
Yeah, and I think about, like, so, a lot of our west end area is relatively new development, so they're typically in compliance with their lot sizes. So that's normally a fifty by one hundred, uh, foot lot, so Barrington Heights, right? Um, those kinds of, of lots. In our older neighborhoods, there are lots that are, um, uh, like twenty-five feet, uh, wide, and they were just platted, uh, well before nineteen eighties, when the subdivision ordinance came into play. Um, but I do think about those lots, uh, it would be tough to add a driveway. It's not impossible, but it could be tough depending on how their, um, property is situated. But ultimately, we can, I can craft it however, um, council would like, uh, you know, giving grace, uh, periods of, uh, so many days. The main thing is, you don't wanna get too complicated with it, because then, um, it, it's, it's not an issue of tough to enforce, you just wanna make sure that you're being, uh, fair to each and every, um, each and every person when you address.
Right, yeah, maybe seventy-two hours, I'll trust. Uh, any other cities that you think have an ordinance, uh, that you're, that's similar to this, that you think, uh, is kind of the model, or does a great job, or has gotten positive feedback?
Each one's pretty unique. It really, um, some are very general, where it's like just no yard parking, period, uh, front or side. Um, some go, go into a little bit more detail where they flesh out, you know, these lots are exempt, these are not. I really would like to look into it more. Obviously, this would be a zoning code amendment, so it would have to go to Planning Commission, where I would do more of a workshop of that ordinance in specific.
I think council should also be cautioned to not trade one problem for another. There are portions of, uh, our city that have very narrow streets, so, um, most likely in our older neighborhoods, where they would probably not be able to either feasibly put in pavers or feasibly put in a wider driveway to accommodate all their vehicles, which means they will result to on-street parking, which may become an issue for our garbage trucks, our, our emergency vehicles, fire trucks are pretty hard to get through or just navigate. So just kinda be cautioned that that, that might be another problem that we're trading.
Right. Uh, and that was one comment I had for the large part of the north and south end that has ditches. Those roads are normally narrower and, uh,
south end that has ditches. Those roads are normally narrower, and, uh, those are a lot of single-car garages, and they, people park in yards and have for a long time, and if we require them to park on the street, we, you know, not just for our ambulances and trucks, but also for kids that are driving their bikes. It just, you know, and I know Peyton at one time was a big problem, and if you move people out, you know, the size of the street that you're going to be putting them on, I think is a real question. I, I'm, I'm in real agreement. I know it's, it's an eyesore for people, and, uh, Councilman Crenshaw's caller calls me too, and I understand the frustration. I live around the corner, because some people have used things, but in terms of how to, with the roads, I, I'm all for us exploring it. I, but again, I don't want to trade one problem for another, where, and certainly put anybody's, uh, health, public health at risk or safety because of emergency vehicles are less drive. Yes, Councilman Durio, then Councilman Turner.
So, Demi, in your professional opinion, is this really a big problem in Beaumont as far as yard, cars parking in yards?
I think it, it, I think it depends. Um, there's certain areas where there, you see none of that. Um, a lot of your newer developments, they have HOAs, um, that enforce that, um, so you won't see that in there. Um, you know, with your older neighborhoods, though, um, though, obviously older developments, older homes, um, they don't have, back then people didn't have three, four cars per household. They had one, um, if that. So they didn't need these large, uh, driveways. Now, you know, when it comes down to, just like how the city needs resources, right? It comes down to citizens needing resources. Um, city obviously can't go pour a driveway for a citizen, but, um, and that's not what I'm suggesting whatsoever. Um, but, you know, you gotta keep in mind that if we put in this ordinance, um, do they have the resources to comply? And if they don't, you know those cars are going to be coming to the, to the right of way. Um, that's just one of the concerns that I have. It's not a bad idea. It's not, it's just one that we, it's really got to be well thought out.
So our, um, the junk car ordinance that we already have, that addresses junk cars as far as where they're parked, that's in the yard as well?
So it doesn't a, address necessarily, um, where they're parked, but it does address, um, the condition the car is in. Um, so I can read that definition again. We also have, uh, our code enforcement manager, Lynn Foot, who could probably rattle it off right off the top of her head, um, because she does this all day, every day, and does an amazing job. But, um, JMV vehicle is, can move on its own, um, has an expired, invalid, missing, or no license plate, or inspection sticker. I think the inspection sticker with the state law is a little outdated at this point.
If, if a, a JMV is parked in a yard, do y'all enforce that ordinance as well, or is that just if it's on the street?
So on the street, um, can't be, you can't have a JMV stored for longer than, uh, 72 hours. I think, Chief, help me out. I think that's, uh, in general, um, can't have a, a car stored for longer than 72 hours in the right of way. On private property, sorry. Yep. Um, on private property, you have 30 days.
We have 30 days?
30 days.
Okay, is there anything as far as neighborhoods, as far as parking like RVs or boats or anything like that?
There's not. Only within, um, the Oaks and Calder Place, um, because they, their Oaks district is in a historic preservation overlay, um, so cars or, uh, objects obstructing the, um, the view of the home can, um, obstruct the view of the architecture and stuff like that, right? Um, and then also Calder Place is in an urban design overlay, um, basically, uh, basically, well, I think it says it for itself.
Yeah, there's special rules for overlay districts that, that can be accounted for that are not necessarily applied to the entire city.
I mean, and I, like, my neighborhood, uh, folks' lots are two, three acres sometime. Uh, have, uh, speaking for myself, we'll have family events where a lot of folks will come in and, and they'll just pull and park in the yard. I mean, I wouldn't want, I wouldn't want, uh, Lynn coming to my house to break up my Christmas because I got people parked in the yard.
Oh, she's fun.
You know, but, um, but those other districts that have no parking in the yard, would they, the residents voted for that?
Yeah, so I think the Oaks District was enacted in 1991, um, and I think Calder Place, I don't have that off the top of my head. I want to say, um, late 90s, early 2000s.
Calder Place, it's about 12 years ago, but we did a survey of all the property owners to make sure there was a majority that were in, were in favor of it.
Well, I would think we would have to do the same thing for this. They got, they, they got at least asked if they wanted it, but we're just gonna put something out there and say, can't park in the yard no more. People that live on li- little tiny streets, you know, and I just, I don't think it's one, it's not a one-size-fits-all deal. It has to be very specific. To me, on, on how long it can be in the yard or, or something like that. Because now some, some people do have, uh, two or three cars, and they got room in the yard, but, you know, why would you park it on the street if you have room in your yard? You know, so it's got, it's, it can't, like I said, it can't be a one-size-fits-all ordinance. It's gonna have to be real specific, especially if, I mean, these folks were gonna, if we, if we do this ordinance, they not gonna even get to, uh, survey or get to vote on whether or not they want it in their neighborhood.
Well, it would, it would be through a public process. It would have to go to planning commission, right? We have to advertise, um, and all of that kind of stuff, um, to get the word out. Um, we definitely need to do some social media, um, interfacing. Um, but again, it doesn't have to be an outright citywide ban. This can be, you don't have to do any of it. You can maintain cur- current ordinances, and I'd, I'd wanted to bring that, that PowerPoint up with those options again. Um, or, you know, maybe it's something that's better to talk with your constituents on, or we can maybe try to do a public survey, something, something to that effect. Um, but it doesn't have to be an outright citywide ban. We can, you can craft this how you, how you want it and how you think is best for Beaumont.
Can, can neighborhoods like with, with a covenant, can they enforce something like this?
Yeah, yeah, that, uh, that's why I put as an option, you know, interested neighborhoods can consider establishing their own HOA. Um, you know, obviously with HOA, though, it's, it comes with fees, um, of their own that they pay to that, um, to enforce, but they can do that to govern themselves. You could also think of districts, um, you know, that, that's a little bit more involved. Um, but if there's certain neighborhoods that maybe they want, uh, to preserve their historic architecture, um, or anything like that, and are not within a current district, maybe they could think about that, but, um, but yeah.
And it's, oh, but it's okay now, though, for like your RVs and boats, they can park in a driveway?
They can, yes.
What about on the street?
For not longer than 72 hours.
A RV or a boat?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Turner?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, one of, one of my main concerns is, I do think it is a issue in the city of Beaumont where people park in the grass, but if we're gonna be transparent, let's be honest, if staff really finna go in some of these neighborhoods and some of these people yours and really asking to move their cars, I, I, I would highly suggest it, it wouldn't be a good idea. That's just my opinion, because unless you're gonna bring a cop escort with you when you're doing it, I don't think that's safe for some of our staff members to be going out there to, to certain neighborhoods who, who is normal culturally to park in the grass. I just want to be mindful that that's gonna, that can get serious, and I think it could be a huge problem. But I do understand the sentiment of what's going on, and I'm not, I'm not opposed to it. My other option is, is it, is it something we can do where, where we create districts or zones where people in that particular district, if, if surveyed, it could be implemented in that district? Because again, when you do citywide, I just don't want to go into the West End and getting somebody to remove a coin the same as going in, you know, South Park and asking to move a coin to the yard.
You know, if it's not, if it's not city and whole, you may, you may try to canvas in, within your wards who, um, or, or we can try, um, you know, interested neighborhoods, and then that way they can create an HOA, or they can maybe approach the city on like if they're interested in a conservation district, um, or anything like that, um, they could possibly, um, help, help initiate that neighborhood-wise.
I would prefer not to force the HOA on neighborhoods, but if we can create something, and I understand that, but if we can create something where, let's just say a particular neighborhood, you know, the, the majority of the citizens in that neighborhood want it, I'm with it. But one thing I don't want to do is send y'all in certain neighborhoods, and they're not knowing what's going on or abreast of us changing these rules, and it can, it can get dangerous.
But.
Councilman Durio, then Councilman Hilliard?
HOAs, if that, if that HOA wasn't in effect when a person bought that house, they don't even have to join it, do they?
So the way an HOA works is that the neighbors collectively have to get together, and they have to have meetings, and they would have to vote for it. So if the majority of the residents in that neighborhood within those boundaries decided that they want it, an HOA would have to, it would be there. Now, a person living in the neighborhood who voted against having HOA, be like anything else, you didn't win. Now we have a HOA.
Councilman Hilliard?
So, but we can, we can craft this to where, you know, uh, no longer than overnight parking, which would alleviate some of that. I mean, we can design this any way we want to, and I'll have to correct you, yes, we are having a problem with that in, in the West End of Beaumont.
I just asked if they were.
Yes, we are. I will tell you, my phone gets burned up. I get about 10 calls a week on one specific location, which me and Demi are very aware of. So, you know, even if we crafted something where we said that you were allowed to park overnight in your yard, and, you know, that would, I would think would, would be a, a, a good place to start.
Like, so not longer than a certain period of time?
Right, so that people can still, in the smaller plotted areas, can still park in their yard, as long as it's not longer than a certain time, and, and then fall into the license plate. Of course, inspection stickers don't matter anymore. You know, are the tires flat? Is it up on blocks? Is the motor sitting out of it? You know, those are the things that I think we need to address more so than anything else, because we have a widespread of that.
Yeah, and I do want to be, I want to make it very known, junk motor vehicles is applicable now. That's in place. That is a, that's a thing. It's been, it's been around for a long time. Um, that's in, in place now. So if you, we're talking about periods of time, I'm not, I'm not opposed. I will, we'll craft whatever, um, whatever your priorities are. Um, and I'll give my input. Um, but it does become, it does become difficult for code, code enforcement in that way. Um, specifically that, you know, they have to catch them on the date that they start, um, or they, or we have to be notified. Um, right now we have five code officers citywide, um, enforcing all of the ordinances, um, in particular, or pertaining to chapter, parts of chapter 10 and 12, um, and now, now some, uh, trickling into zoning. Um, so I just, I want to be transparent on the enforcement levels that we have. Um, so it, it's gonna be important that we utilize 311, or you guys, um, let us know when there's some, if you hear something, um, let us know that there's an issue, and then that way we can start a case. Um, sometimes we get, uh, complaints that something's been going on for so long, we just simply didn't know. And so now we start the case on that day, and that's when the, the time clock starts.
And I just want to say.
Councilman Durio?
I get calls on junk motor vehicles all the time as well. I don't get one call by somebody parking in the yard. Not, not one, ever.
Councilman Turner?
And that's what I mean with being at large, you know, culturally, things are different without just saying it. And you got to understand, you can't do it straight across the city. That's why I'm saying, I, I can't support something straight across the city. We need to understand culturally, people live in certain neighborhoods differently. So I, I am open to it, I'm not opposed to it, but we got to be careful of what we're forcing on some people who don't have the money to get a driveway or other additional parking in some of these smaller neighborhoods. So I just want to be mindful and be very clear where I stand on that.
And I, I think this is just an ideal time, though, because we had our, we've begun our comprehensive plan, and this is certainly something that we can look at as well, because I think too, in order to be effective at it, I have found Councilman Durio in my short time on council, when I'm getting calls, it's because it's in areas that they're not used to having cars or boats parked in the yards, and they're seeing it, and it's upsetting them. So that's what gets them started. But to be able to have, to be able to effectively deal with this, we're also gonna have to expand the staff to be able to, you know, because I don't think, code enforcement primarily responds to complaints, is my understanding. They don't go out, they're, they're not setting up radar traps necessarily. But, uh, but, you know, I, I'm, I'm with y'all. I know it's a problem, but I also know in parts of the city, we don't want to create other problems, and certainly traffic safety and public safety and public health is important. So, uh, you know, I think, you know, getting, beginning this process, uh, having been in real estate a long time and HOAs, I'd be willing to take, they have that new app, Cashew, or whatever you can bet on. There's not anybody gonna form a new HOA. That isn't gonna happen in the city of Beaumont, and, uh, it's, it's a convoluted process. But, you know, I think it's something we need to delve into, but with this comprehensive plan, we're doing it, you know, I think we can also include it into that, because it's not going to be an overnight solve anyway. I, I think we'd have to include it in the budget when we're looking at implementing it. So any, anything else?
I have.
Yes, Councilman Williams, excuse me.
Breakout trailers, boats, and RVs, I mean, is that, do you see that more than vehicles or?
I see a combination of it, but that is something that, um, I notice is, you know, just, uh, storage of trailers, and, and largely, this is a, a blue-collar town. Um, so, you know, you got to keep in mind that people are going to have their equipment, uh, with them. Now, they can't have heavy equipment in residential zoning districts. Um, that's already built into our zoning code, but, um, you know, they can have a trailer that doesn't have two axles, um, like in their driveway or on their side yard, unpaved.
Sure. Yeah, I, I mean, I think the struggle for me is just, I get it, it can be an eyesore, but it, it is hard to tell someone what to do on their own private property. I mean, it's, uh, um, it may be number four would be a good place to start.
All right, thank you, Councilman Williams. Anybody else?
All right. Thank, thank you, uh, Ms. Engman, and for a very thorough, and it sounds like we've got some more work ahead. And so at this point, we're going to move into council member comments, and Councilman Durio, I believe it's your turn.
I thought about some more of the parking stuff, but I'm not gonna bring up the tractors and lawnmowers that got parked in my yard. Uh, I just want to say, um, Veterans Day is coming up. Um, I think this, uh, Tracy, correct me if I'm wrong, you said our next veteran coalition is November 18th, Central Park, 10 a.m.? Okay. Okay, and I'm, um, also, I'm, uh, thank you council for, uh, vote for that, uh, Mr. Patillo's marker in the park. Hmm, let's see. The lady, Ms. Jeanette, that lives in Grace Lake, I will aggress her because that's actually my cousin, but I'll have to tell her if she has a problem. She knows she can call me, but I'll talk to her about that. Um, also, we have a couple of other, um, veteran, uh, events that's going on. The, the Dory Miller Post on Tuesday, the 11th, it's gonna be a lunch for the veterans at 11 o'clock. And also at our Mother Mercy Church on Saturday, it's gonna be at 11 o'clock as well, presentation. And I think that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Durio. Councilman Hilliard?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, well, I, I don't have a lot, but I would like to say that Damian, uh, Milchalk, uh, fundraisers today at Corvilles, she was diagnosed with cancer, and so, you know, it'd be nice to see our city come out and support this family as, as one village. And, uh, other than that, you know, uh, Veterans Day is coming up, you know, and, and, uh, it's a big day. It's a day to celebrate the men and women that, that got to come home. So, uh, let's all remember that. And, uh, other than that, that's it. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Hilliard. Councilman Turner?
I don't start out with something, Paulie. Ms. Ma- Ms. Molly, I got a call by Pastor Kennedy Andrews about how will your department handle business and got out there and addressed some of the issues that were going on in the Highland area. So I promised him I would give you kudos out loud, because he say often in the city, people come to us and complain, but we don't really praise or get a current, you know, good feedback when it's something good. So I wanted to let you know, I appreciate you. He asked me to do that personally. So Pastor, I did it. All right, and next, uh, to Ms. Delala and Urban Roots, the Pear Orchard Community Garden. I actually had the opportunity to attend it. I went with a couple of, a nice few amount of dollars in my pocket, and I left with an empty wallet. So I got a lot of goods. I supported as many people as I could, and when I say when I say it was packed, it was caused all the way down the street, and it was good to see that type of, you know, environment in that particular neighborhood, that type of life, and you had people from all over the community that were there, so thank you for doing it, I hope you continue, and anything we can do to support, I will. The Fall Fest event, I was able to attend the one in Antioch, and it was great. It was like a, a fair in the church parking lot, so, you know, kudos to, I'm a member of that church, kudos to my pastor, it was a really good thing, and all of the pastors and schools who did trunk-a-trees, thank you. And Ms. Addie Allen, what you were talking about, it was a traffic common policy, and you're right, you know, it's a petition first, and once the neighbors do the petition, staffs come out and they do the, they do the study, and after the study, we can look at possibly some of the bumps, the speed bumps, the different things to go in the neighborhood. So if it's a particular area, I, I'm open to walking it with you and helping you get the petition, I'm more than willing to do it if you do want to go out there and do a particular area, I will support that, okay? But lastly, everybody get out and vote, today is the last day to vote, everybody please get out and vote. Thank you, and y'all be blessed.
Thank you, Councilman Turner. Councilman Williams?
Yeah, today is a very big day in Beaumont. It is my daughter Sloan's fifth birthday, so just want to wish her a happy birthday, and, and days like this are a good reminder of why we all do what we do in, in the different capacities, so happy birthday.
Very good, Councilman. Councilwoman Sherwood?
It's another great day in Beaumont. I want to encourage everybody to go out and exercise your right to vote, it's very important. I'm excited about the historic marker. I want to thank everyone again for all the kind words, all the gifts, all the cards, all the support, everything that has come from everybody that continues on. For my sister, I am grateful, and yeah, go vote, we got this, let's go Beaumont.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Crenshaw?
No comments, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Madam City Attorney?
I'm gonna say happy birthday to little Ms. Sloan, I had the pleasure of meeting her recently, and she is precious, so happy birthday, Sloan.
Nothing there, thank you.
All right.
Just want to mention that Ms. Jeanette Ardi, who came up today, staff has already reached out to her about the trash in Parry Archer, then she's gonna provide locations to staff to address it.
Thank you. Did a great job.
I just want to also say that our kids celebrate birthday today. Today's my son's 35th birthday, he lives in Austin, so I want to wish Terrell a happy birthday and wish Sloan a happy birthday as well. Thank you.
I'd just like to recognize the city for being awarded the scenic city designation. We were upgraded to a gold standard, so Beaumont's moving on up in that respect, so we're doing some great things, thanks to Kenny忘記 and his group and what they're doing around town, and we just encourage all Beaumontians, is that correct? Beaumontians to participate, make sure, let's, let's keep Beaumont clean, get the trash off streets and right-of-ways, thank you.
And I, I have to, I went out to Delala Johnson's Urban Roots event on Sunday as well, and, you know, she's been doing that for a few years and it's really grown, it was tremendous. It was right off Fourth Street and Glenwood, and the whole street was full of people, it was very diverse, it was, it was great for Beaumont, everybody had a great time there, and I, I know that she will have continued success there, but it, it was very wholesome and all the kids were out, it was, it was very exciting and certainly celebrating your daughter's fifth birthday and your son's 35th, that's awesome. The Jefferson County Historic Commission, they've left, but they've been working hard, they put in a lot of hours to, to help bring things up to standards and be recognized and to save our history, which I think is very important. And next week is November 13th, Chili Supper at St. Mark's, that's been happening for decades, so big time in the city. So, and again, it is, there's plenty of time to vote, three and a half hours, and with that, we're recessed into executive session. Thank you all for coming today.